I have to, I have to show that I have this electrical work done. Well, what happens if I could deny that permit? Didn't they just place all that? I mean, doesn't that kind of make that shit? I'm just wondering about the process. I get, like, I, I, I just, you know, you're just...
Well, it would kind of be, like, I think, like, any other, any other business. Like, you know, in my town, typically, if somebody opens up a business, they hang out a big sign that says, "It's open for business." And if they didn't go to the town and get all of their permitting and everything in order, you know, the town would be down on that door and say, "Hey, where, where are your permits? And if you don't have them, we need to shut your doors," you know, until you've got that permitting in place. I think, I think that probably one of, one of the biggest issues with, with these cultivators is, you know, if they start cultivating in a residential dwelling, I don't believe they hang out a big banner that says, "A new business coming." Let me see what I have here. So, I'm, I'm not necessar-- you know, unlike any other business, I, I don't know that, you know, that they have to go and they have to seek approval with their, with their towns to, to open up.
So, this, um, this as it is would apply equally to a single-family house as well as to a, a multi-family apartment, apartment in a multi-family?
It would be, it would be a single-family house or a multi-family dwelling. You know, this is, this is cultivating in sort of a non, non-commercial space. You know, you'll see right here in the letter that came from Professional Financial Regulation, and they actually say here, "Some of these caregivers share the product for several patients in a single-family dwelling." Under the board's regulatory structure, a single-family dwelling being used by a caregiver as a grow site for multiple patients does not qualify for exemption. So, you know, you still need to, you know, go and get a, go and get a permit for a cultivation in a residential dwelling, a single-family dwelling.
I guess I wonder, I don't know if there, if there's anyone else who could see that. I guess I wonder if this is, if this is consistent with any other activities that someone might do in their residential dwelling? Because I understand that it'd be, be required for, like, a, a, you know, you're setting up a, a business and, at least a lot of the caregivers I know about, I don't know, maybe some of them have people actually coming over, but I know a lot of them do delivery. So, it's not, it's actually different. I don't know. I guess it depends on the individual. But do you, but do you, do you know of other situations where, based on, based on someone's, just their personal activity in their home, they'd be required to get an electrical permit?
Well, we have, we have other, we have other conditions within the cultivator laws that, that put specific requirements in place. I mean, we do say that they need to do so in a certificate facility, and that's all part of them doing a certificate. We also say that if they're preparing additives at home, that they, they need to get a, they have to have a commercial kitchen. They have to have a commercial space to prepare those additives. And I'm assuming that that commercial space is, is inspected. Does anybody know that?
I guess I wonder, I guess I wonder, you know, with those cases, I mean, I'm not going to go into the pros and cons of the commercial kitchen, but, of that requirement. But I guess I think that, at least the impulse behind the commercial kitchen, I wonder, is, you know, you're preparing something and that's actually going to be consumed by someone else. Whereas, I guess, the concern with electrical permits would be more that it could lead to a fire or something.
Sure, sure. There's, there's high wattage that goes on with, with these grows. I mean, you know, you talk about one of those, you know, single 1,000-watt ballasts, and one of those ballasts heats up 10 amps, which is equal to, you know, probably most of a 10-amp circuit. You know, you have just one of those ballasts in one room with an air conditioner going in that room. You're probably going to snap your circuit. So, unless you've had, you know, somebody come in and put a panel in and all of that other stuff, you don't have, you don't have the wiring to that one room. I mean, in my kitchen alone, you know, we have, if I put on the cure machine and the toaster at the same time, I put the breaker, you know, and that, that, just, just that one kitchen only has two breakers. I mean, if I had three of these light bulbs in that one kitchen, you know, I would probably snap a breaker. And they're saying, you know, from, from what I've talked to people, is that, you know, for, for smaller plants, these ballasts can be good for, you know, maybe, maybe 46 plants. But once you start to get into larger plants, it would be good for, you know, just two, two plants. So, we're talking about situations where, you know, we're looking at serious commercial activities that occur within a residential dwelling. It's not like having a graphic design business where you just put things that you do around the walls, you know?
Representative Sanderson, did you have your hand up earlier? I guess, I guess, that's my concern. I guess my concern really comes down to, do we, do we apply this standard to anything else that's done in it? Like, is a house someone owns? Senator, Senator Haskell?
I'm interested to go through all kinds of inspections, too, in shared equipment. And she goes along.
I'm assuming probably people that are, that are running, you know, mechanical, mechanical equipment, you know, that are probably, you know, work with, with, you know, wood, with, with high-wattage machines, probably run into the same types of issues.
Any other questions? Questions for the sponsor? See none? Oh, Representative...
So, again, maybe not a great question, but it's, I, I, again, maybe someone else has out here. I am interested in the analogies, like we've just gone through. I mean, you know, we're talking about people running a business out of their home. That requires the use of, you know, maybe higher-end, higher-voltage electrical equipment, and they might, people might otherwise use it, because that's, that's, that's my impression. So, you know, analogies to people that run catered businesses, or hairdressers, or, you know, woodworking shops are, I mean, those are interesting analogies to me when we talk about this. And, and again, you know, my understanding is that it is possible for, you know, this type of business to occur in a, in a multi-unit apartment building, where, you know, we would want to be concerned about, you know, fire hazards, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm interested in that.
I guess, I guess the thing that I, I'm kind of wrestling with here is when we talk about, like, the commercial kitchen, so that's about making sure that the product is safe for the consumer. Not necessarily...
Well, that certainly would be one of the concerns. But again, anytime we're talking about people running a business out of their home that requires machinery, I do think there could be, you know, other issues of fire hazard and, and, you know, safety concerns beyond.
Well, all, all commercial businesses have certain OSHA regulations and everything else that goes on. I mean, I know that, you know, one OSHA regulation specifically, you know, be, be a part of something like this is that extension cords are potentially used only. So, you, you plug one of these, you know, high-wattage speakers or, you know, things into an extension cord. OSHA says that you can really only use an extension cord for, for three months. And they're actually, you know, look at that as a, a fire precaution.
But a business like Oklahoma Business or, you know, or Home Law, this, you know, wouldn't necessarily raise the same, you know, risk.
I wonder if that's why the sole proprietorship, they're going to control everyone.
Representative Sanderson?
Thank you very much. I'm reading the language here. A prior caregiver may not cultivate marijuana in a residential building unless that caregiver has obtained from an electronic inspector, et cetera, going down through. Number one, the majority of people, unless you're doing just a very small number of plants, probably aren't cultivating right in their residence. And I know that's part of the things that you're, you're concerned about in the residence, fire danger, et cetera. They probably have something off-site on their home property, greenhouse, et cetera, where they're growing. Do you know what the cost of a permit is? Is there a cost associated with this?
I'm not, I'm not sure. You'd probably have to ask your town about the cost from a left-hand side.
And if they weren't growing in, right in the direct home, would that pick up? Would, is that still applied?
Well, if they were, if they were growing in a, my concern is where people are sleeping. You know, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about, you know, if they have a garage, you know what I mean? Off-site at their house, that would be probably more for an electrical inspector than... I mean, I think that's a reasonable, I think I'm more concerned about people in their town. Physical problems, maybe.
I, I mean, I have a tendency to, to understand the concern, especially if it were in a multi, multi-family dwelling. Because then you have one group of people who are putting another group at risk, potentially, for not being careful about how they're operating their lights and et cetera. And I would be more than happy to support this bill with that provision inside. A single-family dwelling that's out on their own, most of the folks that I have, I know who are doing this, it's usually a separate building away from the residence that they're, that they're, that they're living in. So, I, if you're looking at it from a safety point of view, I, I'm not inclined to appoint it for a single-family dwelling. But for a multi-family dwelling, I, I would be more than happy to support that to protect the health and safety of other individuals in the building as well.
I think it could really depend on where the single-family dwelling is located. I mean, down in my part of the state, in, in Wyndham, I go and go into Portland and houses that, one on top of another when you go into Portland, or, or Westbrook, or, you know, even if you're a car investor, houses side by side. And as we usually hear, a single-family dwelling. I mean, I think that we also have to be concerned with, you know, the, the people that, that have to fight fires. I mean, we have, we have firemen, and, you know, they, they get injured, unfortunately. They get permanent oxide poisoning when they, when they go into fires, they get burned, and everything else. So, I don't, I don't think this is just limited to the occupant, you know what I mean? Or the builder themselves. This could also be not, then, you know, this could extend to their, their families, their children, their wives, their parents, their husbands.
Was there a question over here by a representative earlier? Representative Hymanson?
Thanks. So, I'm looking at, and had the Commissioner, Department of Professional Financial Regulation, the screen sheet that we got. And it says, "Under the board's regulatory structure, currently, a single-family dwelling being used by a caretaker, caregiver as a grow site for multiple patients does not qualify for exemption from the state permitting and inspection requirements under 32 MRS section, et cetera. It is probable that some certified medical marijuana growers are unaware that in some circumstances, the electrical installations there to use are required to be installed by stewards in provisions." Do we have someone?
We couldn't carve it out, then, if we're kind of, like, single-family dwellings, we couldn't carve them out anyways because of the statutes we already have.
Yeah, it doesn't qualify for an exemption, so they're already not exempt. They already have to have whatever the state permitting and inspection requirements under these.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I think that all the, all the PHHS is asking for is that, that when these people apply for their permit, that they comply with, with, with having, having gotten that inspection done.
That they prove it. Obviously, so they already have to have it done. Is the proof that you're...
This is just the proof. And then what the department would do is, and once they provide them that proof, they'd get their certification.
Because right now, just reemphasizing, they're already required to do that, and find an inspection. It's the proof part that's enforcing. So, who would be...
And that's what we would be adding in to that. I mean, I imagine with most situations where, you know, I know that Representative Burns can have this question before about the idea of, well, what if, what if somebody goes out and they apply for a permit, then they deny the permit? I know that any inspector that I've ever worked with has, has allowed me to go in and show my plans, you know what I mean? Let them know what I was going to do. You know, and usually they'll work with you in, in obtaining that permit. It's usually not like a, you know, that's right, so we're not going to give you a permit. So, you can, there's a give and take with, with inspectors.
Additional questions for the sponsor? See none? Was Senator Bellis, did you, I think, you had something to, to sum this up here?
Thank you, Representative.
So, my understanding from Representative Corey is that he's proposing the amendment that the department has proposed, which is on purpose. And I just wanted to flag, in terms of concerns, from a carrier perspective, and potentially from a dispensary perspective as well, is that, A, in both sections, where it says, "The department shall verify the authenticity of the electrical permit prior to reaching a decision regarding the initial or renewal application for registry identification card." This creates a layer of potential bureaucracy that other businesses are not subject to. So, it may be reasonable to require, and this is a policy decision on your part, to require that the dispensary or the caregiver, particularly in a multi-family unit, produce the electrical permit to the department. But the standards in our laws are, are a presumption of innocence until proven guilty. And I think that creating another layer of requiring verification of that electrical permit by DHT officials, probably don't have the authority to verify an electrical permit, creates a level of suspicion and potentially unnecessary bureaucracy. So, we would just urge you to consider striking the verification requirement case. And potentially, for caregivers, really restrict this to multi, multi-use units. Because this could become, given that it's current and it's required upon renewal, become a very onerous requirement.
Senator Haskell?
If you actually read it, it says, "A valid permit." It's already got to be valid.
Yeah.
I think that standard's already there.
Any additional, Representative Sanderson?
This may be a question for the sponsor. So, would this be required just upon the initial inspection or initial issuance of a caregiver's certificate? Or is this an annual inspection?
Under this law, this is annual. Because it says, "Initial or renewed registry identification card." So, must that permit... So, for example, when I started my business in Manchester, they issued a building permit, even though I'm not building anything, and it's valid for one year.
Well, this says, "For an initial or renewed registry identification card," which would mean going forward, putting the statute in. This is what I'm reading, how I'm reading it, but I just want clarification on this. You already have current caregivers. They would have a renewed card coming up, not an initial card. So, is this mean that they have to, are we talking one permit, one electrical inspection? Or are we talking an annual one, and then they're okay going forward? I'm seeing one, this, one from the sponsor.
That would, that... So, it would need to be clarified in the law, because I think that is open to question.
I don't think it's clarified well, actually. A permit is issued, and it's valid for the duration of that permit. So, if the duration expires, then it's contingent upon the caregiver or the dispensary to, upon next renewal, submit the new, the new permit. They may not require ever to get another permit again. And so, they would just submit with their renewal application the permit that they once had, just demonstrating that they are compliant with the requirement that they had a permit when they... Because in that case, we would have to, if it's a renewal, and they once had a requirement for a permit, we'd have to ask the question every time we got an application that didn't have that, and say, "Wait a minute, this, we have to go back." The administrative behind that would be challenging. But asking a caregiver with their application to just submit their permit with their application upon renewal, every time they have to renew, would cover that issue.
So, even though it was expired for a renewal?
Right. It was, there was no change because of the application. The reason I'm saying this is, has there been any change in cultivation location? They have to document that. So, if there has been a change in the cultivation location, I would expect to see a new permit with that. So, if there's no change in the cultivation location, then a copy of their, of the permits that they once had, that they had to acquire to get their initial location, is fine by them, demonstrating compliance.
I know, I saw Representative Hymanson had a question exactly when Representative Bellis was up.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Senator McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. It seems like if it was necessary initially to get a permit based on what this caregiver was going to grow, that it would also be significant, as they reviewed, that maybe not only the location changed, but the amount of cultivation that's going on may suggest a re-verification of the permit, or not. Not to be punitive, but just to be on the same level of safety as we were requiring initially.
Senator McCormick, that's a good point. Because if you say, for instance, a caregiver decides that they want to just cultivate for one patient now, and they don't want to be required to, you know, empty the, the permit for the multiple, then it would no longer, that situation would need to exempt under the, under the statute cited by Commissioner Head. So, then, they wouldn't need to demonstrate that. So, if they were only cultivating for one, and they would let us know that as well. The applicant would let us know that.
Additional questions, discussion? Senator Haskell?
I'm voting on that. Language on purpose, tweet as the amendment, minus the part A, which is the verification. On each one of those.
That's, the motion, is there a second? Second by Representative Teague, moved by Senator Haskell. Like that for a question.
Yeah. (noise) 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 Hey, Eric. Eric. (noise) 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 (noise)
Is there a question or another motion?
I'd like to look at the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, that's up now. Uh, is there a question or another motion here? Senator Haskell?
So why the heck would you do one thing, and then somebody else? Well, it, the real focus, I think, of what we were trying to get at here is multi-family, of course, close, folks who are close together. Seems like we were going to impose a, another layer of, of provision of information to the department than on everybody in order to focus on what might be a smaller number. This is already a requirement. We haven't changed that requirement at all. And so I think it would be unwieldy to try and sort out, this group of folks has to send in permits, this group of folks doesn't have to send in permits. I appreciate what the Commissioner of Professional Financial Regulation said and think it might be a great opportunity for education on behalf of those folks who are caregivers. And consequently, I can't seem to find a path here that feels very comfortable for the whole committee, so I'm going to make a motion on motion pass.
Is there a second? Uh, second, Representative Sanderson, moved by Senator Haskell, on motion pass. Any discussion on the opinion motion? See, no discussion, then without objection, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion on motion pass, please raise your hand. All opposed? unanimous. Move to ten fifty-nine, it's act relating to marijuana testing facilities. Oh, he should get a little start.
I was going to say, you.
I'm just going to, I'm just going to put it up here.
Ten fifty-nine, we went act relating to marijuana testing facilities. We recall there was another bill similar to this, that was Representative Sanderson's bill, which we, of which we voted to pass on with the intent of having one bill as a proposal, which is this. So there were, there was some discussion about whether or not there might be some components of that that might want to go in there.
I did include that bill in this analysis and in, and in the gross pack as well, because I knew that there was aspects of that that the committee wanted to consider. And so would you like me to, to introduce both bills then? Um, is that, is that all right? Okay, great. So we'll start with LD ten fifty-eight, and again, at the public hearing, this bill was voted, oh, not to pass, but there was a request to include this in the conversation at the committee work, ten fifty-nine, so I just wanted to make that clear. And ten fifty-eight, an act regarding medical marijuana registered testing laboratories, this bill establishes in the medical use of marijuana laws, the registration of testing laboratories that perform testing on marijuana samples for the cannabinoid profile and for possible contaminants. Registered testing laboratories must be located in the state, and the laboratories and their principal officers, board members, agents, and employees are given the same immunity for prosecution, search, seizure, and penalty currently granted to registered dispensaries. The department is required to establish an application form and fees for registered testing laboratories by December fifteenth, um, two thousand and fifteen. And so, um, just to, to make it clear where this is located, this is in, in a, in a reddish color, there is a, it enacts, uh, it defines a registered testing lab, and then on page thirteen, there's a, um, some substantial language that's enacted to talk about the authorized conduct by a lab. And then there's also some unallocated language that I included on this legal size document that talks about the rules that the department are, is directed to, um, to, to establish. And so I'll, I'll, I'll move down to ten fifty-nine to introduce that as well, and then if it makes sense for the committee to wrestle with some of the statutory provisions that are, that are included here, then, um, we can proceed that way. So ten, ten fifty-nine, uh, is an act relating to marijuana testing facilities. This bill allows for the operation of marijuana testing facilities. These facilities may possess marijuana regulated under the main Medical Use of Marijuana Act. Dispensaries and registered primary caregivers may own and operate marijuana testing facilities for research and development purposes. If a label for medical marijuana refers to potency or cannabinoid profile, the label must be verified by a marijuana testing facility. And so this establishes, um, it's the same, it's, it's a similar concept, but this just enacts some, has a different idea about, um, what the lab would be doing and how it would be, um, established. And so if we'd like to, um, hear from the sponsors and, and begin to, uh, look through the language, um, I also just wanted to, um, mention that in the, um, purple packet, attachment number four, the department submitted, um, a letter offering information with some additional suggestions about, um, how the bill could be amended, um, as, as the committee proceeds. And so, um, if you have any questions or if you'd like me to walk more specifically through the provisions, I'd be happy to, or else, um, we can hear from the sponsor or however they like to proceed.